Good morning. I'd like to call this work session of the South Hampton Town Board to order on this sixth day of February 2020. Please rise and join us for the pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. Welcome back. It's funny, I instinctively got up to do the pledge and turned right, and the flag was still there, like the national anthem, like "Go Say Can You See." Somebody remembered to put everything back together. This room had been torn apart as part of the heating and air conditioning renovations that the town hall is doing. It's a massive undertaking. To thank you, Christine Fettin, our town engineer, for all your work, Peter Gordiello from your team. I know you guys have been really busy, and I guess you got us back here ahead of schedule, right?
Absolutely.
So that's great. It's nice to be back. Not that we minded the basement so much, but this is a little more elbow right here.
The lower level.
I could actually, when I stand up to say the pledge, I was trapped before I could actually get to the side of my chair, so it's nicer. It's nice to be back in this room. All right, so we have a couple things on our work session. Now I guess we'll start with the roll call.
Certainly. Supervisor Schneiderman.
Here.
Councilwoman Loftstad.
Here.
Councilman Martel.
Here.
Councilman Bouvier.
Here.
All right, so the first item on our agenda is an update on Suffolk County Multi-Jurisdictional Multi-Hazard Mitigation Plan update. That sounds awful complicated. Frank Sapon and Christine Fettin, our town engineer, Frank, deputy supervisor, are going to tell us what this is all about.
We're going to certainly try.
Or at least endeavor.
Endeavor, yes. And if I may add to your comments about getting the room done in record time, and kudos to Christine and Peter and the maintenance staff, I also want to mention that yesterday our CTV staff was crawling around the floor and hanging out on the ceiling to make sure all the microphones were hooked up and the cameras were working and the TV sets were working, so they all, it was a team effort, and it is good to be back in this room again. There's more to be done.
Duggan Patton has moved from the red wall to-
Well, we're going to try to put something else on that wall that brings a little more color and vitality into the room, which I think it could benefit from.
Vitality. Sorry.
So we wanted to talk to the board about the multi-jurisdictional multi-hazard mitigation plan. It's a plan, actually, that we have already. We committed to the plan in, I think, 2014. It's a regional plan overseen in its creation by FRES, the Fire and Rescue Emergency Services Division of the county. When we agreed and committed to it in 2014, we also agreed that in five years, we would seek an opportunity to revisit and review and re-energize and develop the plan, because five years is a long time. Things change. So that's what we're here to talk to you about today. You have in your packet for Tuesday a resolution authorizing the supervisor to sign a letter of intent, so that we can, we as a community of municipality departments can continue to participate in the program. The program is grown. It covers, it's more broad in nature. One of its principal benefits is it does give us access to FEMA funding, both in a reactive role, when damage is done and FEMA funding is available, having this plan in place gives us access to that. But also, the operative word here is mitigation. It's about preventing when possible. So there's also funding that would be available as participants in the plan to prevent things from happening as best we can. Road endings, flood damage, things of that nature. But I would also, and Christine has more detail about this, but I also want to, in general, say that the definition of hazard has also been broadly expanded. So we think of hurricane damage, a fire, hazmat incident, but we're also talking now about cybersecurity and other things that were not so immediately on everybody's radar, even as recent as five years ago. So the plan's definition of what is in fact a hazardous event has been broadly expanded to everyone's advantage, I think. So they had their first meeting, actually, yesterday, and Christine attended that meeting, even though we didn't sign our letter of intent yet. I think it was important to have representative, they being FRES, had the first regional meeting. And again, to our advantage, and are about to be administrator for Public Safety Division, has been actively involved in these kinds of activities, even when I was working on it five years ago. Mr. Murphy is still, has been very involved, is very familiar with the plan, was one of the major contributors, this is the current plan, to that development. And we hope that the board sees the wisdom in having him continue to be involved as the lead contact person for all of these, because many of the agencies, the fire marshals, the bay constables, the code enforcement officers, are all under his jurisdiction. So he would be an important person. I'm hoping that about five minutes after eight on Monday morning, after Ryan arrives in the building, I'll be down in his office with this book, and I will be queefed to him with my best wishes. But Randy will be, I mean, Ryan will be, Mr. Murphy will be a great asset to us. So with that, I'm just going to turn it over to Christine and ask her to give you a deeper detail and answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, thank you. Frank, you hit on a lot of it. Just to go over the hazard mitigation, the definition that they gave was any sustained action to reduce or eliminate the long-term risk to life and property from a hazard event. And they had representation there from New York State Department of Emergency Services that was also offering help in terms of some of these applications, once we get this plan in place for funding, because you have to do the cost-benefit analysis on it. And they say with mitigation, every dollar that you put towards mitigation will save you $6 in the long term. So it's to either prevent or reduce damage from sustained hazard events. Suffolk County is working, is in contract with Tetra Tech, which is the firm that they worked with on the 2014 Hazard Mitigation Plan, and they also do a lot of other work with the county on planning events. They're working very closely with the county. This plan is going to be two volumes. One is Suffolk County General Overview. Second volume is the jurisdiction-specific. So we would be working on updating, adding, refreshing our volume two, in terms of what we had identified in 2014 as the hazards, if we've identified more, if we've had an increase in certain ones, the critical facilities that we had in 2014, and any new ones that we've developed since that time, which would include Hampton Bay's annex, especially if we're going to be putting Office of Public Safety in there. We could put that into this mitigation plan to get a larger generator, I'm just saying, for instance. So it's those kinds of plan updates that if we do this plan right and we put the components that we need to for long-term planning, we'll be in a much better place to request funding, once there is an event and mitigation funds do become available. But if it's not in the plan, we're probably not in the best position to get funding through this source. So they want to have this plan adopted by January 2021, if possible, so it's really accelerated timeline. Tetra Tech is going to be assigning one planner to each jurisdiction to meet a minimum of two times with the team that's assembled by the town to go through this plan, and they're going to work with us to develop it, which is really good. And then there's, there will be additional meetings of the steering committee with Suffolk County and Tetra Tech, and we will have our own work to do. The county has grant funding to develop the 2020 plan, and each jurisdiction is going to have to track their time as the share, the cost share for that.
So I'm sorry, so any costs are only in time?
Only in time. We're not going to get any monetary reimbursement for the time of town staff putting together this document, but it's going to go towards the overall grant that the county has, and they're the ones who are paying Tetra Tech, so.
So, I'm sorry.
No, you can-
I was going to ask you a question sort of midstream. The Superstorm Sandy Task Force that I sat on, one of the recommendations was this. I don't know if you, if you looked at those and sort of done the cross comparison, but the recommendation was for funding at the much lower local level, which I think is, it's actually really nice to see that this is actually working. I just wanted to be sure that you had compared those documents to make sure that what was produced by that team still fits in with what's being proposed now through Tetra Tech. I think they actually testified at one of our committee meetings.
Yeah, I think it would, it's a, it would be not accurate for me to say that I've compared them, but I've read through some of that report, and I see the overlap.
Okay. So I'm just kind of excited, because it seems to be working. It's nice to see this happening.
And I think that this has great potential for us to look at those areas that were damaged through the superstorm Sandy, also nuisance flooding areas that we've come across where, you know, climate change or increased storm events have caused more localized flooding that we're seeing that we might be able to put that in as a potential hazard for our mitigation plan to be eligible. So some of the hazards that they have identified and that they've said that they're going to put in the updated plan include the coastal erosion that affects us so greatly, especially with the latest barrier island, Schenochak being very close to the breach. The commercial dock is right there. That's a huge piece of infrastructure for the town now. So coastal erosion's huge for us. Drought, earthquake, barrier island, expansive soils, hurricanes, infestations, and invasive species, which we have them. Nor'easters, severe winter storms, shallow groundwater flooding, wildfires, groundwater contamination. So we could put in mitigation for Hampton Bay's water district, that sort of thing. Disease outbreak, transportation, we're very restricted in our transportation during a natural disaster or any kind of disaster in that regard. So it goes into risk assessment, rating those hazards, mitigation options to overcome or prevent loss for those options. It also goes into sheltering, evacuation, and housing. So sheltering during the event, short-term housing, or, God forbid, what happens if we get hit with something like Katrina, where we need to have long-term housing? Where would it go? You know, where would they be able to line up those trailers? That sort of thing. So it's a pretty comprehensive report that I think that affords us this opportunity to make it as robust as possible. And I think that it would be, it could be made even better by the participation of several key departments within the town, just because we all work on our own areas, and sometimes it's hard to look outside of our blinders, if you will. So this opportunity to look beyond our blinders, do long-term planning that has the sustainability element included in it.
Yeah. As an example, you know, I think Legislative CROCE is going to have a task force for the county for coastal resiliency. I think, they haven't voted on it yet, but the task force is being formed, and I think it's important that this informs that task force and is directly aligned, so.
That's, I think that there's a lot of different tentacles on this that are great.
Right, and rein it in a little bit, yeah.
Yeah.
Does this cover mass casualty potential?
Disease outbreak is one of the potential hazards.
I'm wondering if our police force could, some of the things that our police is undertaking, would they qualify for some grant funding under this?
Well, and that's, that's why I have a list of town, town departments to include in this.
And, which I think is responsive to your question, Tommy John, but correct me if I'm mistaken, it's not so much about the department, it's about the strategy. And if that department is connected to that strategy, that's where the funding comes from. So we're not going to fund necessarily the police department or the highway department, but if we develop a strategy that has multiple department participations, it's the strategy that's funded and then administered through the needs of those departments. That's why it's important to have a local coordinator who can oversee that, because there's no strategy that really belongs to any one department.
I know that we have undertaken several tabletop exercises on various situations, and we'll have to do that again to see which departments are in need of various.
And the last time when I participated in this, I think it was over a longer period of time, but there were, over a two-year period of time, I think nine regional meetings that we had and a half a dozen conference calls. We did a lot of this with conference calling. This shorter timeframe has compressed that to four or five meetings that by signing the letter of intent, you're committing the time of some of our staff to that activity. And of course, the meetings are only half the loaf. It's the work that you do. When you come back from the meetings, that's the other half of it. But it is, it is well worth it, because I'm sure everybody recognizes these activities, there's no choice about whether or not you want to do these kinds of things. But they are time-consuming, they are expensive, and access to other resources, like the county and the state and FEMA, and access to the financial resources is critical. Like so many other things, we realize, we're handling responsibilities that are well beyond the responsibility of the town and well beyond the resources of the town. So this is a real advantage, and I would argue, not that it needs arguing, but certainly well worth our engagement in the process.
I'm assuming that this also corresponds to the National Incident Management System that was created about 10 years, more, 14 years ago. That's a chain of command, you know, where first responders get on the scene and how that chain of command is passed along.
I think that this is part of that process, but not necessarily, we're not going to get into that necessarily in this document.
Okay. One last question. I'm assuming that it does. The NIM system, very important. Our fire departments, they're separate municipalities. Do they need to adopt this separately in order to possibly qualify for grants for some of our overarching plans?
The staff? So I don't, I don't know the answer to your question. I don't believe that they have their own separate plan. I believe that we can consult with them, similar to hospitals and schools-
Right.
-and incorporate their needs into this plan.
I'm assuming they would come under our umbrella, but they are separate municipalities, and they may have to do something that's pro forma.
So we can ask, we can ask that, but they did say that schools are not going to have their own plan. They're going to fall into ours. So it's in our best interest to reach out to them. Hospitals, that sort of thing.
Right, all right. Well, that answers the question, I think.
An immediate, like, for a declared emergency, they have the Stafford Act, I believe, that is the funding source to reimburse municipal agencies, fire departments, police departments, et cetera, for their response during a declared emergency. Because I know that that's how we fall under the debris management, the multi-jurisdictional debris management plan that we adopted a while back. And that's also that we could be on the same page in conforming to the requirements that would put us in the best position possible to get reimbursed in the event of a declared event.
Yeah, and also, I mean, as part of those recommendations that came down, particularly with debris management, that was one of the big issues. I think one of the recommendations was for chemical monitoring systems in place when we have spillage and things like that, but also where to store equipment. And the main emphasis on the work that we did was that we realized that it was at the local level. At the last hurricane, there were a lot of people that were never found. You know, when emergency services went to find people, it was hard to find where they are. So that was one of the big things, one of the big recommendations that came down as well, to use local resources to help solve some of the problems that the county encountered when it tried to come in and do two things. So it's good. It's the right thing to do.
Yeah. The board in the packet that you have in front of you has a template for the intent, the letter of intent. It pretty much states all that we've talked about here today. And the board, as I said, has a resolution authorizing the supervisor to sign this. We'll put the letter together, and it's in the Tuesday packet, assuming the board grants the participation. We'll submit the letter. Some of what we put in the letter today will change. We might expand some of the contact people. We might change some of the contact people over time. But the letter is not, it's just to certify our continued participation in the program.
Do we know who these first two contacts are going to be? The primary and the floodplain administrator?
It had, I had been the primary contact along with Steve Troy. We didn't involve, I don't think the floodplain administrator was part of it last time, but that's either Janice Sheer or Mike Benacasa. With Mike retiring, that's one of the points where the, we could put a name now that might change a little bit later on, since this will be going on for the rest of this year. And of course, Christine has always, has been involved, because there are a lot of facilities elements that are part of this. The parks department, the highway department, the police department, and a number of others' department will have to be part of the process, but not named necessarily as the principal contact people.
Thank you.
Is this an optional plan? I would be surprised if it is. This is incredibly important and necessary for all towns to do, and I'm wondering-
You don't have to participate, but I'm not sure that I can find a good reason for not participating.
And every municipality is, right?
Right.
Yes.
Well, that's what gives us its strength.
We would certainly stand out if we didn't. No, I know you're not suggesting.
And the county's came to this by the Disaster Mitigation Act of 2000. So I think there's overall, there's legislation requiring-
So all you're asking from us today is a commitment to participate in the plan, again. Because I obviously want Mr. Murphy on, you know, he's starting next week, and I'm sure he'll come up to speed very quick, since he was involved with this plan, and he's been with FRES for a long time in a supervisory capacity. So he'll be a great asset for us in, you know, emergency planning.
And hopefully, Jay, to your point, that as we go through this, not as we develop the updated plan, but in 2021, we will be able to come to the board and say, here's an opportunity to seek some funding for this activity. Guess what? As a result of the fact that we participated in this. So the real benefit ultimately will be the opportunity to address issues that come up and use this mechanism and use the funding that it gives us access to. So.
Now, are all their emergency plans, like our hurricane plans, that's separate from this document, right?
Separate, but they should be, there should be a direct nexus between and among all of those plans. They shouldn't be, to Tommy John's point about the incidents command sequence, that's embedded in our operations of the emergency call center. So we follow that protocol in that regard. So there's a lot of integration of all of these different elements.
And it keeps us aligned with government at different levels, which I think was one of the things that also came out of the Sandy Task Force, which was an issue. So this is great.
Nobody has any issues with us continuing to participate? Can I, just while you're here, it's sort of related, because it deals with emergency services and public safety. How is the, we've got the new guy coming on Monday. How's the new building coming?
It's coming along. We've had a couple of surprises, but it's coming along. They're putting the finished paint on. While you enter both doors, meaning the senior center door and the annex door at the same, there's no steps, you're at the same elevation, you would think, there's a 10-inch elevation difference when you bust through the wall from the senior center to the new space. So-
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Just like that?
No kidding.
So we-
That was a surprise.
We have a ramp going along the backside of the great room or the meeting room. So we're accounting for that. They're going to have to pour that before we do the actual finish and do the flooring.
There's always surprises.
Furniture is scheduled to come at the end of this month. So we're chugging along.
That's interesting.
The fire suppression work was done. We had to move a couple heads. We have, we have to put in the lights, the new LED lights.
Why aren't we looking at moving into there?
I think we could do a partial move, meaning, once we get the furniture in there and set up, we could start moving code in. The longest lead time thing that might hold us up would be the transaction window at the front area, because it's specialty-made glass for security. So they've got a little bit of lead time on that. So I'm thinking sometime in March, towards-
And we have to, you know, get an electrical underwriter certificate for the wiring. Do we have to get a CO for the space? Do we have to go through the building department for all those inspections that everybody else does, or?
Yeah, so we've been talking to the building department on that. So it wasn't a great change in a lot of ways.
Because we have a contractor doing that work.
And the fire marshals have been involved in the fire suppression system, as well as the fire alarm system, so.
Okay. So everything's obviously by the book. The bulkhead, that was approved capital project in, I guess, is it in East Quag Bay Avenue? Has that happened?
That's under the parks.
Okay. So Christine is taking care of that.
Kristen's taking care of that, and we're, so she's working on that, and I'm working on the removal of that older building that's on the site that's in an advanced state of deterioration. We had to do a pre-demolition survey on that, so we're in the process of figuring out what's the best way to take it down, because it does have some asbestos-containing materials in it, non-fragile. But that would just make it a little bit more challenging, waterproofing on that exterior of the foundation wall that goes to the basement has it in it. So it probably makes more sense to just take it down by the asbestos contractor than to do two different contracts.
Okay, sounds expensive.
We're also working on the Tupper boat house. We've got a lot of projects.
All right, well, maybe on another day, we'll do a capital project update, you know, to see where we are in some of these. Not right away, don't worry.
Thank you.
When your life slows down. All right. All right, we're going to change topics.
Thank you. Thanks, Christine.
So we're going to talk next about East Quag Water Main Extension Project Phase Two. And I think Cindy, is this piece you're here for? Do you want to come forward? Cindy McNamara for the CAC in East Quag. You can join us here. All right.
So the board may remember that at some point in the conversation, we talked about expanding, extending the water mains outside of the immediate survey area that was established by the Suffolk County Water Authority, and the board gave permission to extend that north along, north of Damascus Road along-
Lewis, 104 Lewis.
Am I giving what's the name of the road?
Lewis Road.
Lewis Road, excuse me. I drew a blank there. And connecting it from the edge of the survey area to another connection on 104. It's about a 2,000-foot extension. The board agreed to do that, so we reached out to Suffolk County Water Authority, who does the primary engineering for that. And they had to go through their normal approval process with the state health department and so forth, and gave us an estimate, and we reviewed that estimate with the board. They've completed all of the work for getting the necessary permitting that they require, and the board has a resolution now to enter into a contract to do this additional main work. It's not part of the original main work that we had done. The board had made a distinction, you will recall, that we were concentrating on the area that had been defined as at-risk by the Suffolk County Health Department through that survey area that we defined, and we amended the legislation to make that distinction clear. So this is outside that area, but we've already agreed to fund that project, and the Suffolk County Water Authority is now prepared to commence that work, and we have to enter into a contract with them to do that work. There are about 11 properties along that road. There are about 11 properties along that road, one of them is commercial, I think all the others are residential, which would be, then have access to that main. This project will put in the infrastructure, that is, the main itself, and the tap at the street for each of those residences, and that's part of the cost that we will front, that's a little over half a million dollars to do that project, that's coming out of the grant money and the CPF money that the board had allocated for this project, and then any of the residents along there who choose to connect, those would be separate and distinct efforts, just as we're doing in the East Quogue project. The difference being that in the East Quogue survey area, the board had agreed that there was enough evidence to indicate that there was the potential for contamination, and that the homeowner, many of those homes, the 100 or so wells, had been tested by the Suffolk County Water Authority, some showed evidence of contamination, some had no evidence of contamination, but the board felt that there was enough concern that we would agree in advance to connect to those properties at town expense to the mains if the property owners chose to do so. Most have, but not all, about 60 of the approximately 110 wells or residences have agreed to hook up, we may get more, but right now it's about 60, 65 residences. These residences are outside that area, they have access or they will have access to the main, they will have to provide, as the legislation indicates, evidence that the emergent contaminants exist in the wells that are supplying the drinking water at their residences.
If they want us to pay for the hookup.
If they want us to pay for.
Or they can pay for the hookup.
Yeah, and for the board, just as a reminder, I'm sure you remember this, when this is not done with town involvement, the main extension and the tap is paid for by the residents, the infrastructure is supported by the residents under what the Suffolk County Water Authority refers to as a surcharge, so you pay for that and then you pay for your connection. The town has already agreed to pay for the infrastructure, we would agree to pay for the connection if they meet the, if the individual homeowners meet the criteria as outlined in the law, that is, that there is evidence of the emergent contaminants in the drinking water supply that they are taking advantage of.
And we felt that this connection was necessary along Lewis Road to supply water to the areas that we were expanding into.
Yeah.
It's a better system.
Well, I'm not sure better, but it's much more costly.
Supply more water, provide redundancy.
The nearest mains were over 2,000 feet away, now, one can do that, but it's extremely costly on the individual homeowner, so what the town agreed to do was extend the main and provide the tap opportunity, and I think the average property is less than 100 feet from now the existing main, so that cost is considerably reduced, so in that sense, yeah, it's better because it's more cost-effective, and also we have the assurances from the Suffolk County Water Authority that the water supply that they're providing, their customers meets all of the regulatory standards that they're required to meet. It's hard to assure yourself of that when you're drinking from a water that's supplied by a private well, so that's.
These properties are north of the town's Damascus Road, former landfill site.
That's correct.
The water flow is southeast primarily in this area, so it's unlikely, though these chemicals are very, they travel very quickly in groundwater, not always so predictably, but there is also contamination found at Kowreski Airport.
Correct.
So there is the possibility that this could be an impacted area from, you know, from Kowreski Airport, from the former, you know, the National Guard, from the former military base there.
And when the board agreed to support this project, it was that rationale, that there is a potential because there are some evidence of, sources of contamination north of this site, so it would be wise, as the phrase that you hear all too often these days, out of an abundance of caution, to provide the opportunity for those residences to connect. But I do want to make it clear that the board's initial effort was to address the area that had been defined by the Suffolk County Water Authority as an area, we didn't make that matter.
Suffolk County, sorry, just help.
Suffolk County Health Department, thank you. We didn't define that area, the town had no role in defining that area, but we agreed to support the effort to bring drinking water into that area that had been defined by the Health Department.
And they, not only did they define it, but then they modified it, they extended it in different directions, but not to this one spot.
That's correct, but because of the rationale that you just summarized, Jay, that the potential might be there because of contaminants north and west, it would be wise to extend the water main, and given that the allocation of funds was already there and it was within that budget, and now that we've gotten the additional million-dollar grant, it's very reachable with the allocation that the board provided.
Great.
So that resolution is in there for you to sign the contract.
And then that could move forward, and then they put it in, I guess, springtime?
Well, speaking with them, because we've had such a mild winter, there's no frost anywhere.
So they can do it.
They can get started as soon as they get the contract, I mean, I don't think the weather's going to change all that dramatically.
Are those property owners, maybe Cindy, you would know, are they looking to connect?
I've spoken to several of them. The issue, if I could just step back a little bit, when this originally went through, the Board of Health had made this an issue of possible contamination south of Damascus.
Yes.
As that was being, as the town was going in and they were reviewing it and having your own experts go in, the Board of Health then opened an area to the north of Damascus that was of concern, and those people are on wells as well. The Board of Health until very recently has been supplying a lot of those homeowners with bottled water, till very, very recently. There are areas to the north that have contamination levels higher than homes to the south. The problem is, the people to the north, when this first went through, I mean, even our CAC was of the mind that they were included because they were in a Board of Health area, just not the one that was south of Damascus, they were north of Damascus. So literally when Suffolk County Water Authority was coming down Lewis with the main, there were people to the north of Damascus looking out their windows going, why aren't they here? So they all wanted to, the problem is though now, the red, the original legislation was amended in December, so that now you can't connect and get reimbursed if you have contaminants, those contaminants have to exceed the levels by the state. Now, when I connected, I had, and this is, and this is just indicative of how fast this changes and how homeowners are dealing with this from my standpoint, when the Board of Health originally tested my water, I had no emergent contaminants. When the town tested my water, within, I want to say, three, four months after the Board of Health test, I had them. My levels were then higher than my neighbor across the street's additional levels, her levels were lower, so it's, you're talking months.
Moving in the ground.
So now these homeowners that are to the north have tested with contaminants. Now, if you're saying they don't meet, they don't meet the levels of state level, which is changing constantly.
What, how much do they have?
They probably have as much, I think they have more than I had, I can get, I can get numbers from them.
More than 10?
I don't know, I don't know their actual numbers, I do know though that they would have met, they have the contaminants in their.
I think our trigger is, is the recommended new number.
By the state.
The 10 parts per trillion, not the 70.
Has that been adopted yet, or is it still 70?
We haven't stated a number, but we've made reference to whatever the state recommended standard is, that we would comply with that now. Cindy is correct, the state is considering that, and I think it'll probably change to that, but there's, you know, it isn't done until it's done.
I think we would have justification if it was at or over 10.
But my problem is, they are now.
To pay for the connections, that they would have clear evidence of contamination.
But had they been included in the original Board of Health area, which they were in, it was just north of, there was two maps, and it just, you have to question when it came out in the paper as to whether it was the map to the, because there was an actual article that said the area has been expanded to now go north of Damascus.
But not in, I don't think the areas where these homes are, were never on the map.
You're correct that.
North of Damascus, those homes were included.
North and west of Damascus, it did not include the.
And I'm talking about.
They're on the, they're, most of those are on the east side of Lewis Road, most of the residents are on the east side of Lewis Road, the maps that we have from the Suffolk County Water Authority, excuse me, Suffolk County Health Department, did not expand to include those areas, the town board took that initiative because it makes sense that there was a potential there, but it was not included.
If they're on that.
All of the residents, all of the residents I'm referring to are west of Lewis, they're on Lewis, but they are on the west side of Lewis.
You want to go grab the map and we can look, but my recollection is that these properties were not on the Health Department's map.
The second one they were.
No, I don't, we'll check.
Okay.
If they were on the second one, then we can pay to connect them.
Because that's what I told them, you're on the map, you're good.
Frank, you want to go grab it?
Yep.
Because it's just, it's, if they were, if this main was extended when they thought it was going to be extended, and it was, honestly, it was a miscommunication, it was, our CAC wasn't even aware that it wasn't being extended to the north, we thought it was going to go from Fox Hollow to Spinney and have that whole section of Lewis that never had.
So the Health Department promulgated a map, they used whatever science they used to say, here's our area of concern for these contaminants, and we have said in our legislation, if you're in that map, you don't have to wait to be contaminated, you will assume that your supply is already impacted and will go ahead and use our water quality funds.
Because their concern is, they've got it into.
I think that we looked at this, and we'll find out in a second, but I don't think these homes were on that Health Department map.
Their concern is they would then have to do, you know, $400 testing.
Yeah, but then it might be worth it, no, actually, I didn't.
No, I mean, just like continually until they.
The Health Department might test for free, who knows?
So the area in question here.
Yeah, they're all in this side, they're all on this side of Lewis.
Well, if they're on this side or in this map, they're eligible.
No, because this is the first one, the second one went to the north, because there are people in this area that are all affected.
She's referring to the addresses that I have.
These are the people where you're connecting the main.
That's correct.
They're outside of that.
And the main currently goes to this point right here.
They're outside of this map, they're not outside of the second map, the second map includes all of this area here.
Uh, I don't think so, I think the first map was sort of here, then this was added, and this was added, but the first map was smaller, do we have that first map?
I'd have to go back and dig out the sequence of changes, but.
This is the map in effect.
This is the map that relates to the legislation.
Because I know that they were on the second map that got.
So it's a moot.
Well, if you have a copy of that map, I'd be happy to look at it.
Okay.
Because the map that was in the newspaper was the map that.
And then the other question that.
And it may have been the first map.
It either is or it is.
And then the other question.
If they are on the Health Department's map, then we can pay to have to do the hookups, if they're not, we can't, but at least they can.
I mean, they were being supplied water because their water's affected to the point where.
So they should be in this area.
They're in, they're not, they're right here, they're not.
I understand, but it may be an issue with the map that you're looking at. This is the one in effect.
That's fine.
Because I mean, the Health Department is aware of it.
Yeah, but this is the map in effect.
Maybe the Health Department needs to modify their map.
Yeah.
If they tell us that this is an area that we're concerned about PFAS contamination, that would, that would trigger us to be able to then pay for their individual hookups.
So, but they would have to be over 10?
No, not if they're in the map.
Okay, that's my question.
If they're outside of the map and they're over 10, we'll still pay for the hookups.
Because in the words Frank Sipones had, in an abundance of caution, we wanted to be sure that, you know, if we didn't know, let's err on the side of safety and go forward, and that's what we did, and that's the map in effect, so I think there might be a miscommunication here between the map that you looked at and the Department of Health, but this is easily.
It might be, and I know that, I know that they were getting water from the Board of Health, so.
So can I make just a distinction, because I think it's important, so the map that they drew was triggered by a groundwater sample.
At Damascus.
At Damascus, and where that plume, if there was a plume, might travel based on groundwater flow data. The county since has done a lot of groundwater testing on Kowreski Airport, and there's, have been some detections of PFAS up in that area, so there might be a new map that they put together based on sites at Kowreski Airport in which, you know, not related to Damascus Road, because water typically doesn't flow upstream, I mean, contaminants doesn't flow.
It was from, it was from when they opened, when they found those extremely high levels at Kowreski, and they started going south from there.
Right.
This area was.
And you know, you may have seen, you know, I have questioned even Damascus whether that, you know, that sample relates to a different site off of town property that is traveling underneath Damascus, and whether that could be from the Kowreski as well and not from Damascus, so we're studying Damascus extensively and trying to figure out if there is a problem there and how to remediate that problem.
Which we trigger.
But we could go back to the Health Department and say, you know, do you have an area now of concern? They had a detection at the Kennel Club, which was here, which was 17,000 parts per trillion, it was a very high detection, and then they had other tests, you know, north of the Wildlife Center, you know, up in here, and the flow direction is something like this, where, you know, my gavel handle is pointing, so it is possible that this could be a new zone of concern, and if it is and the county says, yes, we're concerned, then we can amend our program to include that.
Okay, so because.
We also should pull in the United States Air Force on this, I mean, you know, it would be there.
There's grant money, there's, you know.
Right, absolutely, and it should be noted that on Lewis Road, we're providing this infrastructure, and any resident on that road can connect up without having to pay that, you know, and that's significant.
Not any resident.
Well, along Lewis Road where we're putting.
Where the mains are.
No, that's what we're talking about, those, they have to pay to connect.
Right, but not to lay the.
Not to pay.
Not the main, only the service line.
You know, what I would say is, why don't we reach out to the Health Department and see if they'll test.
Half a million dollars.
All those houses.
They were doing test wells right at the end of Lewis by the farm.
Yeah, and they.
And what, did they find, oh, so maybe we can get, maybe they have that data.
Or the Health doesn't tell me.
Well, that, some of that work is part of the sub watershed study, so they're actively throughout the Suffolk County, Southampton in particular, are doing that, so to understand the watershed and how it moves, and so, you know, when you see that sometimes, they have to do it empirically, they can't do it through, they use that to do the models of how water moves through the sub watershed, and that's important information to us so that we can establish, you know, where, how contaminants may move through the groundwater, and it's not always the same when water tables change, you know, the directions change, the directionality can be, you know, 20, 30 degrees sometimes different, but in this case, if the Health Department has done that and they make a detection, then that's, that's critical for us to know that, so, you know, then our program will cover that.
Okay.
You know, and if these areas start to get subsidized water mains or water connections, there might be other sources of funding for that, I mean, we sort of jumped in, in that area with CPF dollars because, you know, we hadn't investigated Damascus Road landfill, there was, you know, some indication that that could be a source of contamination, and we didn't really want to wait to find out whether a town property was contributing, we just wanted to get people onto good water.
Well, I know they had.
But over here by the, you know, the west end of Kowreski Airport into West Hampton, where they have been connecting people to public water, that's, the town hasn't been paying for that, that's been, I think the county paid for that, or the D.C. paying for that, or Suffolk County Water Authority?
Yeah, the state, I think, has been the funding for that, and the EPA is doing new testing all around the rim, outside of the airport boundaries.
I know the people, I know the people to the north had not only PFAS, they had other contaminants that were potentially from, you know.
Explosives.
Farms, whatever.
Oh, okay.
But I do know that there's no way, if you can correct me if I'm wrong, the Board of Health would supply you with bottled water unless you had contaminants or, or things that exceeded Board of Health regulations.
That's, that was the rule that they were following.
So, I mean, they had bad enough issues that the Board of Health was giving you bottled water.
That could be, the issue for us, and why we have to be so careful here with CPF dollars, is, let's say there are agrochemicals, agrochemicals, farm chemicals, pesticides that are in their water, and the CPF dollars could only be used for a very specific set of emergent contaminants, if it's not on that list in the CPF law, then we can't use those dollars for that, though it still may be a public health issue that the Health Department wants to address, so we have to be sort of careful, they might have wells that have been impacted by other substances not on the list, and if we spent money there, we'd be subject to it being clawed back, and it could be a real.
Well, if you can find, you know, the Board of Health info, I'll see if I can get you their.
That would be helpful.
Their test results.
We, it's always been the intent, and I think you summarized it well, Jay, of the town to be responsive to the need. But that response is constrained by, in some, and I don't mean that in a negative way, limited is perhaps a better word, by the area defined by the Suffolk County Health Department and the rules promulgated in the CPF legislation. We can't do what those restrictions don't allow us to do. And if there's an opportunity to do more, then I think you hear the board saying it's willing to do more. But right now, the constraints are so limiting that we're doing everything that the law allows us to do.
Yeah, so I think procedurally, you know, if the health department will test some of those wells, maybe they're willing to do that at no cost to those homeowners. And if there are detects above 10 milligrams per liter, even, even on one of those houses, I would say, then yes, that is an area that we probably should connect everybody to.
But Cindy, did you say they all were already tested?
They have, they have Board of Health testing. I don't know whether they did it on their own or if the Board of Health tested them.
If they have Board of Health testing, for anything in here, Cindy, that's what we rely on, the Board of Health testing. If any of these residents have Board of Health testing and it evidences the contaminants that Jay referred to, then all they have to do is supply us a copy of that, and that would be adequate. They don't have to go out and spend another couple of dollars.
I honestly think if one of them has it, I don't know that I need to see that they all have it.
That's a policy decision you guys could.
Particularly if one of the northernmost properties has it, it's probably moving south. So that's a policy decision we'd have to make. But if nobody has it, it's very hard to justify using public funds to connect it to public order. Everybody, you know, wants public water. Many people pay it on their own.
They definitely have it. I just don't know if they have it at the level of 10.
Well, we should find out.
Right, but it also is dependent on the map that we're going to double check for to make sure that those aren't in a second Suffolk County.
Again, if they're within this area that Cindy was referring to, this, you can see.
Well, they're right here.
These are the, these are the, well, this main's going to go up this.
They're on, they're on the east side, or they're on the west side of the main.
And we have the town attorney's office and the contract has a list of all of the addresses that have what they call the TAP being installed. There's probably a dozen of them. And I, quite honestly, have to go back and look to tell you whether it's on the east side of Lewis Road or the west side.
So let's, let's check with the health department.
Yeah, it's easy enough, I mean, it's easy enough to verify.
Can I place the landfill in this?
It's right here.
It's right in Damascus.
Just minutes right here.
These, where these three wells are. That's right. That's where the landfill is.
Right in there. Because all these are all detections, which don't make a lot of sense if the, unless there's another source of contamination.
Right.
Because, you know, again, water, you know, contaminants don't go against the current typically. These are highly missable, so there might be some up gradient movement, but that's a, they travel very quickly. It's very slippery, which is why they use them in TAP water. So yeah, so I think we just need to get more information. I understand. And they're getting bottled water now?
No, actually, the county, the Board of Health, I think, discontinued it.
Yeah. They were sent a notification, which we received a copy of, and that was a Board of Health decision. They were.
And it may have been a testing regimen on their part. So we need to find that out before we can.
So, this may be hard to understand, because I know you, you fight really hard for the people of East Quag. And we appreciate that. And we have to be really careful that we're not doing something called a gift of public money.
I understand.
Right? So lots of people connect, they want public water, they have to pay for public water. If they don't meet a threshold criteria and we pay, we've committed a crime, right? We can't do that. It's, the taxpayer money is your money, it's our money. We can't give it to people. So we try to set these criteria, and I think we're erring on the side of public health. If, if, you know, we're not waiting for them to have 70 parts per trillion, if they have 10 parts per trillion, we'll pay to connect them.
So if there's, if they're 10 parts per trillion or higher, you'll pay to connect them. If they are on a map with a Board of Health concern area, you'll pay to connect them.
Yes. And, and this is something the board will discuss. If one of them is above 10 parts per trillion, and we know we now have contamination in that area, we can have the conversation whether we should just connect all of them.
Okay.
Right? Because if one has it, they're all likely to have it.
And it's important to understand that, that the way groundwater moves and the way testing works is that one test isn't necessarily a permitted indicator, because you can come back two or three weeks and find a different situation. So they have to do trends, and that's, that's why it takes a long time to, you know, understand that. It could be an anomaly. Sometimes there's even false positives on tests and things like that. So, you know, they want to be cautious too, because not to say that, you know, this is an issue, and this is why it's an issue. They need to be able to justify that. So.
And I just want to have an answer for them too.
Sure, absolutely.
Now, if I can go back to them and say, listen, you're not on the map. You have to be on the map to get the, you know.
That map or some new map, because they might, the county might not want to modify the Damascus Road map.
It did open to.
But they might use a new map based on Kowreski Airport, which is now, I guess, a superfund site or possible superfund site. Where is that map that corresponds to Kowreski Airport?
And that, I believe, would be the people that are to the north, in that second area.
It possibly could.
It's a possibility.
It's possible. So rather than say, you know, we'd like you to amend the Damascus Road map to put in these properties that are north of the contamination site, it might be completely, they might be impacted, these properties, but not from Damascus, but from somewhere else. It's sort of, you know, that's been my theory all along, is that I don't know whether Damascus is a source, whether it's a contributor, like it's, maybe has added contamination to an already contaminated aquifer, or whether it's not a source at all.
Yeah.
I don't know. I don't know.
And you can't act on theory, you know, that's, that's what we're doing.
Any property on Damascus, if contaminated, is being contaminated by the Damascus site. So.
We don't know. Possibly, you know, that's a scientific question.
Highly unlikely, though. But, you know, so if there is a benefit to help support the residences, who's going to provide that benefit? Should that be the county's responsibility? Should that be the town's responsibility? If it's likely that a northern area is contaminated from a more northern source, who? We took this on because we, again, out of an abundance of caution, said, it's a possibility that Damascus is the culprit here. So let's do the right thing, whether we know the answer to it or not. Let's do the right thing in the right way for the most residents in our community, which is what we did. Now, if it's outside that area, there's an argument to be discussed about who's responsible for doing the right thing in the right way for the residents in that community.
So from a scientific perspective, and I, you know, I say contaminants won't go upstream, but to some degree, they can a little bit. That if it's, if the water's moving particularly slowly, you know, just like a drop of ink in a glass of water, it will spread out in all directions. If it's relatively slow-moving, there could be a little bit. But I, you know, it's not, we can't rule it out entirely, but.
It'd have to be an exceptional set of circumstances for that to happen. And that's one of the reasons the sub watershed study, and I keep coming back to that, is so important for us. It helps us resolve these kinds of problems.
It has to be an exceptional sort of chemical that spreads very quickly.
I mean, they were, they were doing test wells right off of the Kowreski property at the head of Lewis.
Right, and that may have been an analysis study, or it may have been part of the, you know, the, and I just don't know what, you know, what their, that specific purpose was. But in the course of that, if they had come up with a measurable contaminant level, then I think we would have been informed of that. So I keep coming back to this. The only way we're going to solve that is have a conversation with the department.
Well, we'll check again. When we passed this legislation, when the town board passed this legislation, which references this map in a smaller form, we contacted Suffolk County Health Department to assure them, us, that we were providing in the legislation the most recent map that they had. And they confirmed that. Now, that was a while ago. It doesn't mean that something hasn't changed since then that we're not made aware of. I'm certainly not aware of it.
I'm not either.
They did include on their map properties north of the landfill.
No, they never, they never did.
There was an area. There definitely was an area.
I can show you in that map. It goes north of Damascus Road, right in the map you just showed.
No, but I'm talking about along Lewis Road.
No, I don't believe they included that piece. But maybe, maybe they did. Maybe we don't, we're not working off the right map.
That's, that's always possible. We can check.
And I will say, it was a bit of, I guess, a learning curve when the program started. But I think it's been ironed out, and I think everybody, I mean, the reimbursements have been really quick, and, you know, paperwork has been fairly painless for people to do, but, so.
And that's what, the CPF office and the controls office?
That's our office.
That's Frank.
You're doing it?
It goes to Frank.
Okay, Frank. Frank, there's a lot of stuff.
Janice.
And Janice.
And Janice. Well, you got, there you go.
All CPF does, no, no, no discrimination there. They sign the check, but we do all the paperwork.
Yeah, my neighbor got her funds reimbursed in time to pay her taxes, so she was happy.
Oh, good.
So she got it and came right back.
That's good. Well, thank you, Frank.
But we do have an IA sub degree bay program, you know, so you can encourage that at the same time.
Okay.
All right.
So we will check the questions that Cindy raises with Suffolk County Health Department.
Yeah, you can ask them why it wasn't on the map if it's.
Well, we ask them for the, if they've changed the map.
Or if they got to produce a new map.
I can send them a PDF of this and say, this is the one we have, this is the latest and the greatest. If any changes, please provide it to us.
And even with the change in the legislation, if you are on the map, it still doesn't matter what your levels are.
Right, you don't have to have any detection.
And can you, Cindy, can you get us whatever map that you think you've seen?
Yes.
Because I think I've.
I can go, and I can look out in the hallway on my phone.
Well, just clarifying, within the boundary on that, on a map, not just on the map.
Yeah, yeah, yes.
Yeah, not just East Quag.
No, 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 the actual Board of Health.
Originally, residents who feel, whose wells have been tested by the Suffolk County Health Department, if they have that paper of that test, send it to us.
Well, there also was, I know, when it, when this first started, residents were told you had to prove that you had contaminants in your well in order to qualify. So I know there are people in East Quag, and that might be the, the slow of getting people connected while you're at 60%, is they were tested by the town and the county, and they came up a zero, but they're on the map. So they don't think they qualify.
They qualify.
I'm not sure why they would have that, because the testing.
That's not the information that we sent to them. The first one that came out said that you had to, you had to show that you had some contamination.
Not from us. Not from the town.
There was some confusion early on.
It was, in the beginning.
Maybe we can resend.
I wrote it.
Some information to those people.
That just makes it clear that you don't have to have any contamination if you're in that area.
I remember we had a lot of debate about this, because I remember Kathy Murray here.
We had debate when we drafted the legislation, yes. But the program always, within the survey area, if you were in the area, we provided you with an opportunity to seek reimbursement funding. We didn't ask for any evidence of testing from the homeowners. We used the data sheets that were given to us by the town, excuse me, by the Suffolk County Health Department, and all of the 170, wasn't it?
Thirty, 32, I think.
I mean, initially, we.
We had, we had the test results.
Initially, we tried to understand the law to make sure when it said the water supply was contaminated, that that meant the well or the general area. And I think we went back to Fred Steele on that.
And he clarified.
And he clarified that it's the, you know, the supply, the area. So Doug, you didn't have to have.
So when we launched the program, we launched it with the interpretation that the assemblyman provided us, which, I think I'm quoting him correctly. He said, use the broadest interpretation of the language in the law, which meant that if your neighbor had it and you didn't, you both equally qualify. So our literature to the residents asked for no testing. We asked for the application, the contract with the plumber, and the W.
Cindy, if you know some people on the map, the health department map, who haven't connected, maybe some.
I mean, I'll just put, I'll just put the word out to the entire community that, you know, let your neighbors know and.
Yeah, maybe some don't want to connect. We've had some people that don't want to connect, but.
Yeah, that's happened.
If they do want to connect, then we'll pay for it.
Originally, you know, in the 70s, there were many people who didn't want to connect when Suffolk County water first came in. It's just kind of interesting that some people don't, they felt their.
They don't want to pay for it.
Well, you know.
They're paying for the electric, so.
Eight thousand feet of a service line can be pretty expensive.
Some people didn't want to drink chlorinated water. There was all kinds of reasons why people didn't connect. But probably most that, yeah, they felt like they could get free water, why pay for it? But today, everything has changed. Everything has changed in water because of all these contaminants. You really have to go through so much rigorous testing to know that your supply is safe.
Well, I have kids. I didn't, I couldn't afford to test my water every day.
I don't advise anyone to be on a private well, anyone, because of all the contaminants that have been found.
But we also have private wells that aren't drinking wells. You know, we have irrigation wells and things like that. So there's also issues associated with that as far as runoff from that well to striations. I mean, it's a whole bunch of stuff that goes on. And, you know, we're, we're doing our best to keep up with it. But the standards change, whether chemicals unregulated and regulated, whether the EPA is going to come in with new standards to supersede, you know, the standards that are in place. But, you know, an unregulated chemical is treated differently. It's just a whole myriad of things to go through to be absolutely certain we're doing the right thing in the most efficient way and not, you know, not spending taxpayer money frivolously.
All right.
Yep. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Frank, anything else you got for us?
I don't think so, Jay. I think I'm looking at the agenda here. Nope, it's pretty much covered. It's enough for one day, right?
Yes.
All right.
I think the board needs to consider water contamination in a much wider, you know, 10,000-foot view. This is probably not going to be the last time that this happens, and CPF money is a finite amount. And, you know, we're going to be, this is, this is not the end of this.
No.
You know, it's just a. Kowreski Airport, that whole.
Ironic in a way.
Absolutely.
How much we have spent and how much we have done to protect our aquifer. You know, thousands of acres of open space, tens of thousands, maybe hundreds of thousands.
Hundred thousand. Pine Barrens itself is a hundred.
Probably tens or hundreds of millions of dollars spent on preserving land and recharge areas. And then all the zoning, the upzonings we did, conservation easements, and so much work trying to keep the aquifer pure and pristine. And then you find all these, you know.
Legacy contamination.
And I honestly, you know, like, I don't blame the firemen. You know, they were trying to do, you know, they were volunteers putting out fires, but the, but the companies who produce that fire foam, if they knew that this stuff was highly toxic and would get into groundwater, shame on them, and we'll get them in court.
It's very common next to every air force base in this country.
Yeah, well, we're not finding it in the world. We're finding it not only at airport bases, we're finding it.
In the fire, yeah, sure.
You know. Fire departments.
Everywhere, yeah.
And it, and it's not just these perfluorinated, polyfluorinated compounds. We've got all these other things, you know, carbon, tet, one four dioxide, all over the, you know, not necessarily out here, but in other places. We've had certain agrochemicals through the years, you know, like temec and benzene, freon, I mean, all these things that end up in the groundwater. That, you know, it's kind of, it's sad, because we really were proactive. We did, I think, a good job trying to, you know, we understood that we live on top of the water that we drink. You know, we need to protect it, particularly the deepest area, because we all should be getting our water, not necessarily beneath our homes, but the purest area of the aquifer. And still, we're having these problems.
Well, 30, 40 years ago, when Long Island was dotted with light industry, there was a different mindset as to what to do with wastes.
Sure.
We just, you know, say that.
Yeah. And now we're, you know, we have issues. You have them days. We've got issues downtown with nitrates. It's probably from, you know, probably from fertilizers or septic systems that are impacting the water. Chloride, salt, maybe from road salt. We heard about that possibly last night, or maybe saltwater intrusion because the aquifer. It's really, it's getting really hard to supply good quality water to people, and getting expensive. And water And water bills, you know, the days of the, you know, $300 a year for water are likely over, you know, because of all these contaminants and because of all the filtration that has to be done and all the testing that has to be done. Still, probably your cheapest utility, it's a lot better than your cable bill and your internet bill and your electric bill and whatnot and what you pay to get rid of garbage, but it, you know, it may no longer be $300 a year, it may be $600 a year, $700 a year, no matter who you're with, Suffolk County or our utility. It's an increasing cost. You know, the old days, water was free. So it's not free anymore. And how much are people spending on bottled water?
Yeah.
You know.
Or filters, or filters, filtration systems.
Or filtration systems. So that adds to the cost, too. And anyway, so let's, let's go through the agenda, then we can come back. One of the things on the updates was the meeting we had last night, which was all about groundwater, drinking water. All right, so we have in your packet, the draft agenda for the February 11th meeting. This will happen, it's an afternoon meeting, 1:00 p.m., right here, at our normal meeting location. And let's see, we have a number of public areas, eight in total. First one is on acquiring lands of Lupoli in East Quogue. Second one is on acquiring lands of Pacholk in Remsenberg, Spianak. Third one is acquiring lands of Riser Trust in Neuk, or Riser Trust. The fourth public hearing is considering improvements to the Hampton Bays Water District, pursuant to Town Law 202B. The fifth is public hearing to consider amending Town Code Chapter 31211, authorizing a stop sign at the intersection of Southampton Hills Court and Middle Line Highway. The sixth is a public hearing to consider amending Town Code Chapter 312-15, vehicles and traffic rescinding authorization of a yield sign at the intersection of Windermere Close and Gardener's Lane. The seventh is a public hearing to consider amending Town Code Chapter 312-9, authorizing a stop sign at the intersection of Windermere Close and Gardener's Lane. The last, the eighth hearing is to consider amending various provisions of the Southampton Town Code, including Chapter 330, which is zoning, 292 subdivision of land, and 325 wetlands to require a digital submission of particular applications. All right, so let's go to, any question about the public hearings? All right, then we'll go to resolutions. Julia, first?
Town Board Resolution ID 33462, 2020 cultural arts and recreation grants.
Let me just take a look at that real quick.
Lots of good stuff.
Yeah, that's good. So it's about $30,000, $37,000 worth of grants from the cable franchise fee, going to various cultural initiatives. 33464 authorizes purchases from U.S. Communities contract with Amazon Services LLC. 33490 authorizes purchases, authorized purchases of floor coverings from New York State contract with Milburn Sales Company, Inc. Tommy, John?
Please.
Step down.
Push it down.
Yeah.
All right, already for Tommy John, 33545 authorizes purchases of technology products, solutions, and services.
ID 33547 authorize the supervisor to sign 2020 human services grants. Nice, long list of almost $100,000 worth of grants.
Hold on one second, Rick. No, good. Some good grants here.
Really good, good stuff.
Okay, go ahead, Rick.
Town Board Resolution 33506 authorize the purchase of eight-ton wrecker from Gabrielli Truck Sales Limited from New York City contract.
33469 authorize the purchase of security services from GSA contract and Eastern Suffolk Bosse's contract with Summit Security for Southampton Town Hall. We are on page 11. Tommy John, your next.
ID number 33482 authorize the supervisor to sign an agreement with Viacom Computer Services Incorporated for consulting services to assist the implementation of a new antivirus server environment.
Resolution 33470 authorize the supervisor to execute a contract extension with Coastal Commercial Property Management, Inc.
33548, I think we're going to take off the agenda. It authorize the supervisor to sign a contract with Eastham Legal Services, Inc. to provide processing and serving to the town. Is that being replaced, Janice?
No, they decided to use the state contract, or this resolution was not required.
Okay, so can we delete that?
Put the controls off.
Cindy, you got that?
I've got it.
Okay, Resolution 33550 authorize the supervisor to sign a contract with L.K. McLean Associates, P.C., for professional services to be provided for the Ludlum Park restroom renovation and foundation stabilization.
Town Board Resolution ID number 33549 authorize the supervisor to sign a contract with Robert Holtzman Land Surveying, P.C., for 3D survey of properties on Old Country and Skeon's Riverhead Roads for community preservation.
33543 authorizes the supervisor to sign a letter of intent to participate in the Suffolk County 2020 multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan update project. That was that work session item. 33518 authorizes the supervisor to sign an agreement with Suffolk County Water Authority as it relates to the East Quogue Public Drinking Water Infrastructure Improvement Program. That was the other work session item.
33, I'm sorry.
Town Board Resolution ID 33472 co-sponsored with Councilman Marcel, authorize the supervisor to sign DPP with Toshiba for copy machines from Eastern Suffolk Bosse's contract.
33513 awards and authorize the supervisor to sign contract with Fisher Signs Insurance, LLC, to provide various signs to the town.
Town Board Resolution ID 33551 award and authorize the supervisor to sign a contract with Liberty Contracting of New York, LLC, for Southampton African American Museum and completion. We're finally there.
We're finally, we're finally going to get that done? Nothing but issues.
It's been, yeah, one thing after another, but I can look for it.
It'd be nice to get it finished. So I guess they found the appropriate contract. Rick, you want to read the next one?
Resolution 33495 awarded authorize the supervisor to sign a contract for replacement parts for Chevrolet General Motors with Eagle Chevrolet Incorporated. Resolution 33521 declare items as surplus items.
33523 Resolution authorizing the purchase of one 2020 Ford F-150 XL.
Town Board Resolution 33485 upgrade Microsoft Active Directory Services hardware.
3342A 2020 notice to bidders for private or municipal markets for the disposal and recycling of services for commingled containers, mixed paper, corrugated cardboard, scrap metal, and unprocessed construction and demolition debris. Before we go on to the next one, this is also a real mess, the whole, you know, the recycling piece where the markets have collapsed and the cost of getting rid of these. I was at this Suffolk County Supervisors Association meeting, and we were all talking about how challenging it is right now to deal with our waste stream, every aspect of our waste stream, the brush, you know, that we might see in a hurricane, or, you know, the liquid waste issues we're having with nitrogen, the, you know, the, all the, you know, the costs associated with non-recyclables and trucking them, you know, Brookhaven's landfill, their C and D is closing, their ash is closing, which has got, a lot of the garbage on Long Island is about half of our non-recyclables are incinerated and turned into energy, and they can't take the ash anymore at Brookhaven, which has kept the cost of incineration down. So that cost of disposal now is going to go up considerably. So we're seeing higher and higher costs to get rid of garbage. And we're talking about regionally, as a county, is what can we do? You know, this is not something the town of Southampton, it's going to solve on its own. Will there be one central waste processing facility somewhere? It's, it's really complicated. The recycling piece is really complicated. But, so what this resolution does is we're actually going to go out to bid to see what it's going to cost to get rid of, you know, these various segregated materials, commingled containers, papers, corrugated cardboard, scrap metal, and construction and demolition, so.
Well, there's been a fundamental change in the way our, our garbage is handled. Things that we commonly recycle, we can't recycle anymore, including paper and cardboard and things that we derive revenue from. So this is an important thing to do, the wider widespread issue on the island. There are a couple of good things on the horizon, but they're maybe a year or two away. One is a proposed gasification plant, which will take all organic waste without leachates and without gas emissions to produce energy, which is a good thing. But that's still a drop in the bucket with the amount of garbage that we produce that fills our landfill. You know, I know Councilman Lobstad, and we had voted on the anti-styrofoam, the styrofoam ban. That's 30% of our waste right there. But the cost of transporting these, these materials now off the island has become horrendous and is impacting us in a big way.
Yeah, not so much in the taxes, because most people use Carter's, but they've probably seen the fees they pay to the Carter's going up, you know.
Well, typically, that's where the Carter's revenue was generated by the recyc, the revenue from recycling. It's no longer the case, and so their whole business model's changing, too.
Our operation, too. We were, for many years, self-sustaining. We, you know, the fees that we were charging and the money we're getting from recyclables, plus the green bag program, sort of broke even.
Well, we were, we were actually, we were actually had revenue derived from a large part of our recycling programs. We don't anymore.
Last year, the subsidy, we had to move, I think about $800,000, almost a million dollars, into our enterprise zone to cover those losses.
Yep.
So this is not, and that does affect taxpayers. It absolutely does. And, you know, we have to really think whether this is something that we can continue to, you know, provide this recycling service for people, but right now, we're, we're not shutting it down.
We don't have a choice at this point, because the alternative is, is not viable as far as transportation and companies that are willing to, you know, engage in that business model. That's one of the, one of the problems. So there's been this trend to go away, away from single-stream waste management because of those, those ancillary costs associated with it as well. So we're, we're at a crossroads. It's.
You know, we started, it's not the first crossroads we've been at with handling garbage. It started many years ago. It was really simple. We, we didn't recycle at all. We took literally everything and we threw it in a hole and covered it up with dirt every day. And we all had landfills, and, you know, earlier today, we were talking about the Damascus Road landfill. You know, we started to see groundwater impacts from those landfills. The state said, no more landfilling. There was never a plan. There's never a plan, and the towns, some tried to handle their ways, but most of them just hired contractors to, you know, the towns would collect it, like Easthampton, Southampton, and other towns. They turned their own landfills into transfer stations, tried to get people to recycle to a point. And that became the new course of business until really today, where we're at this second major crossroad, where, you know, the cost of these, of getting rid of these things are getting so high.
Well, and we're dealing with the second problem, which is organic waste. So all the, you know, everyone cleans up their leaves and takes them for composting and brush and all that gets ground up. So we run a composting facility at several of our transfer stations, which is a huge volume. So the amount of this material has increased dramatically for all sorts of reasons as well. So we've been giving it away in an effort to have that compost or recycled.
So much of it is with our culture and also our business culture. The packaging is incredibly large. You know, how many of us have purchased things with, you know, most of it's packaging, and, you know, now I'm getting stuff in cardboard that's, that's got styrofoam glued into the, to the cardboard. It's hard to separate it and.
It's a strong lobby, too, because we, at the Sustainability Committee, you know, this is something that we talk about a lot, is to lobby the manufacturers, and it's a big, big lobby. And you don't get a whole lot of response.
Right, and most of them are offshore.
Yeah. Well, now, not so much. I mean, the packagers are, but, you know, our waste stream used to go offshore, particularly the plastics and things like that, which are now being returned, and that's a global.
I was referring to the manufacturer.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But there's a lot of redundant packaging. You go to the grocery store and buy a box of cereal, and they say, do you want a bag for that? I say, you want me to, it's in a bag, in a box, and I'll put it in another bag. It's a lot of redundancy in packaging, but we do it all the time. We do it all the time. But I was also going to say, you know, I think sometimes maybe we forget we live on an island. It's a long island, but it is an island. It's limited in terms of capacity, and we find ourselves sort of drowning in our own waste in different ways, whether it's a liquid waste impacting the bays and harbors, or whether it's, you know, solid waste that we don't know what to do with. You know, we're an island.
I also think that we depend a lot on the reduce, reuse, recycle. I think we need to start educating and telling people, reduce and reuse, because the recycle isn't happening anymore. Reducing is what we need to do.
I don't know how they do this further west. And we're, Long Island, just Nelson Suffolk, is 3 million people. It's a lot of people. We don't have that density out here, but it's a lot of people on a limited landmass to try to, you know.
And that's actually part of the pressure that we're experiencing. It's part of the pressure that we're experiencing is that, that, that density and that garbage flow that we're trying to stream into doesn't seem to work well for us.
Yeah.
So.
And people are starting, there's a lot of social media sites now for recycling, where people have stuff, and you'll be amazed at the stuff that people post for free, and people say, I'll come pick that up from your house. Amazing. So people are thinking about it, but I think it's a small group so far, but hopefully more people will.
You know, you've done, you know, I think, great work in terms of, you know, the plastic straw and the styrofoam ban. I do still see, as I go around, some places that are using plastic straws. So maybe when our new code enforcement head, maybe we can, I don't want to come down so heavy, but I would like to do an educational campaign to try to identify those places that haven't complied with our plastic straw ban, our styrofoam container ban.
That was a subject of our conversation at the Sustainability Committee, exactly that.
And sort of let them know that we know, you know, because I'm assuming they don't.
And give them some information on it. Here, this is what it is now.
And we plan on doing that. We discussed it.
It's the law. You're in violation of the law now. We're not saying that we should make them pay a fine. I would like to get them to comply with the law.
Education is key.
Others have done it beautifully. They, you know, I go to a lot of places, I get these, I mean, the quality of the paper straw has really improved. It's really good. It doesn't get soggy in your drink, and, you know, you can drink a milkshake through a paper straw now, so.
Where we still have the problem is particularly with franchises, where their supplies are shipped in, you know, out of state, and, you know, they're still using that as a reason.
Well, some franchises have done it.
Yeah, no, and I'm saying, some, some do it and some don't. Some, some are very willing to cooperate and have done that. Some are reluctant, too. So we have a bit of a code enforcement issue there. We've discussed it at sustainability. And so we're looking forward to Rick being here.
Yeah, but we should do just a sort of a sweep, you know, make a list who is, who isn't, and let them know.
A lot of that right up here.
What?
I have, whenever I go shopping, believe me, I'm, I'm looking.
Yeah.
So, and actually, I was going to, I plan on preparing a letter and just in my travels and maybe other, other people's sustainability, and say, you know, do you know about this? Because, you know, people are working hard, and they don't always know what's going on here at Town Hall.
Yeah, well, you can poll them.
Well, bring that list to.
Would that be a straw poll?
Yeah, because we've done that. We have a list ready to give him, so, as part of his informational and welcome package.
Yeah, speaking of polls, you know, I was going to say this later, but we do have the poll on the website about the helium balloons, right, the lighter-than-air balloons. People can weigh in on that, too. So, all right, Rick, I think you're.
Okay, Town Board Resolution 33542, 2020 notice to bidders for furnish and install asphalt concrete. Town Board Resolution ID 33546 says 2020 notice to bidders for installation of cupola and balustrade for at the National Nathan Rogers House.
Is it the same national or just for what?
No.
You just read it wrong, right?
Yeah, I read it wrong.
Okay.
Town Board Resolution ID 33533 is a 2020 Notice to Bidders for Hampton Bay's Transfer Station Booth Replacement. Town Board Resolution ID 33535 is a 2020 Notice to Bidders for Sag Harbor Transfer Station Booth Replacement.
33541, 2020 Notice to Bidders for Printing for Police Department. 33362, Public Interest Order in the Matter of the Increase and Improvement of the Facilities at the Hampton Bay's Water District. These are all like procedural steps related to the next resolution, which 33528, which will be, require four of us, supermajority. It's the bond authorization of $6,355,000 for improvements of the Hampton Bay's Water District. Those other resolutions, because it's a special district, require those procedural steps. And, you know, that $6 million bond, and we did talk about it last night, why we felt we needed to move forward with it and not wait. It's for the iron and manganese filtration at Field Four and for the Bell's Pond Tank, Water Tank, where the surface, the inner surfaces are delaminating and need to be repaired. So time is of the essence on those. All right. 3354, no, sorry, 33534 amends a 2020 adopted budget and transfers from Capital Project Stormwater Management. That's for the Conicestory Program. All right. 33522 amends the 2020 adopted budget for part-time salary. 33512 amends 2020 budget for Hampton Bay's Community Center Common Charges.
Resolution 33504 authorizing 2019 inter-fund transfer from the General Fund to the Highway District Fund to cover special event costs.
33496, oh, that was, yeah, the last one, that had to do with overtime costs associated with special events. I think the Hampton Bay, the funeral that was held. Maybe other events too. So there's no reason for Highway to have to burden the cost of something they're doing in the whole town. 33496, appoint Labor Management Committee for 2020. 33497, appoints Road Review Committee for 2020. 33552, appoint Stephanie McNamara Chair of the North Sea Citizens Advisory Committee. 33465, appoints the Sustainable Southampton Green Advisory Committee for 2020. 33553 recalls and amends Resolution Number 2020-169 and appoints the Agricultural Advisor Committee for 2020. So two members have submitted emails asking to be off the committee, resigning from the committee, and there's two names of people going. 33487, so before I leave the committee thing, so just, you know, we haven't done the Hampton Bay's one yet. I have a number of people who've expressed interest in joining the Hampton Bay CAC. We're also looking at whether there exists some conflicts of interest that we might have to sort out either through recusals or other mechanisms. So I hope to be coming to the board soon. Meanwhile, under public offices law, there is no change to the Hampton Bay CAC. It's status quo, same chair, same members. If they're not meeting, that's a decision, I guess, of the chair, but the Hampton Bay CAC, there have been no changes to the Hampton Bay CAC. Same members, same chair, they ought to be meeting. There's no reason for not meeting. I know some of you received an email thinking they were disbanded. The only way you can disband them is, would be by resolution disbanding them, which we have not done. So the Hampton Bay CAC is status quo until we do otherwise. And that is a matter of law. So 33487, continuation of legal services by Davis Bellman Barrett, LLP, for 2020. 33502 is continuation of legal services by Stephen Leventhal, Esquire, for ethics matter in 2020. 33498 is continuation of legal services by Vincent Tumi, Esquire, for 2020.
ID 33463 is the Authorization of Cost Reimbursement Waiver for the Hampton Bay's Hibernians Annual St. Patrick's Day Parade on March 21st, 2020, from 11:00 a.m. to 2:30 Town Board Resolution ID 33461, Authorization of Cost Reimbursement Waiver for the Conic Baykeeper Ale Life Run 5K on April 25th, 2020, from 6:30 a.m. to 12:30 p.m.
33505, authorize a CPF tax refund pursuant to the first-time home buyer's exemption for Amy Wells.
Resolution ID 33544, waive showmobile fee, sorry, waive showmobile fee for Hampton Bay's Fire Department Carnival.
Yeah, not snowmobile, showmobile.
Town Board Resolution ID 33499, to release maintenance bond in connection with the site plan approval of West Hampton Senior Living, West Hampton.
33382, authorize personnel from Town Controls Office to attend the New York State GFOA 2020 Annual Conference. So that's the Finance Officers Association. 33162, 2020 part-time salaries. 33500, accepts resignation of Erica Martinez, Office Assistant Spanish Speaking in Justice Court. 33501, accepts resignation of Middlelu Allen, Food Service Worker in Senior Services. 33358, accepts retirement of John Ascina, Ascina, Automotive Mechanic Four in the Highway. 33403, appoints Ronald Furler to Maintenance Mechanic Two, position in Hampton Bay's Water District. 33526, reallocate Assistant Town Engineer Title to new grade and adjust salary. 33527, reallocate Community Organization Specialist Title to new grade.
Town Board Resolution ID 33507, co-sponsored with Council of Skivoni, a Notice of Public Hearing to Accept a Deed of Residual Fee from Joseph F. Gaza for Property to Be Maintained as Open Space Located at North Sea, Suffolk County Tax Map 900-98-218.37 pursuant to Southampton Town Code 244-4, obtaining a Development Right Certificate and Chapter 247, General Municipal Law of the State of New York.
33281, authorize acquisition of lands of Lupoli, East Quag. Was it?
I skipped one.
Did I skip one?
Well, another one's thrown.
Yeah. Town Board Resolution, it's on page 52. No worries. Town Board Resolution ID 33509, co-sponsored with Council of Skivoni, Notice of Public Hearing to Accept a Deed of Residual Fee from Joseph F. Gaza for Property to Be Maintained as Open Space Located at North Sea, Suffolk County Tax Map 900-99-216.1 pursuant to Southampton Town Code, Chapter 244-4, obtaining a Development Right Certificate and Chapter 247, General Municipal Law of the State of New York.
Now, I know why I thought you read that one.
It sounded Joseph's.
Just like before. All right. 33281, authorize acquisition of lands of Lupoli, Lupoli, East Quag, and amends the CPF Management and Stewardship Plan to include that property. That'll be the subject of the public hearing earlier on Tuesday. 33138, authorize acquisition of lands of Chalk, Remsenbergs, Bianc, and amends the CPF Management and Stewardship Plan to include that property. That's also a public hearing. 33084, authorize acquisition of lands of Riser Trust, Neuyak, amending the CPF Management and Stewardship Plan to include that property. That's a public hearing as well. And it's all false. Is there any other agenda?
No.
No more? Anybody have any questions about the agenda? No errors, corrections that we're aware of? Okay. Sunday, you're free to publish. Sorry about last night. I must have walked onto the, you know, the table, you must have not been sitting there or something when I first walked on, because I saw Kim at this end and I just assumed you weren't there, but...
I had said good evening earlier.
Oh, did you?
You were busy. It's okay. You had a lot going on.
I apologize.
It's okay. I didn't take it personal.
All right, good.
But thank you.
So, speaking of which, it was a good meeting last night, I thought. It was really well attended. We were wearing our other hats, our fire commissioner hats.
Water District.
Sorry, water commissioner hats.
We're not fire.
Thank you. Our water commissioner hats. And, you know, it was a pretty packed room. I thought the questions were really good. I thought the presentations were really good. The Len did a great job. I thought Bill Merklin did a great job. The Water District folks, you know, the administrative folks at the Water District were there. I thought they did well. And I think the public got most of their questions answered. And, you know, I think the next steps, I'm not quite sure what the next steps are. You can go, Sunday, if you want. So, yeah, I really don't know what the next steps are. If we want to consider, I mean, we're looking at basically, we're doing the $6 million in bonding. There's another $28 million to go based on that schedule. Some people are saying we should borrow it all early, just get it over with. I don't think that's prudent, but I, you know, we have to have the conversation about if Suffolk County Water Authority is willing to absorb the rest of the borrowing and keep the rates, you know, from going up. I don't know whether they are or they're not, whether that's an option or not, but I think we ought to find out. And if they are willing to have their entire customer base shoulder that debt service, of course, we would need to know what the rates would be over the next few years as well, because they have a lot of expenses. They just raised their water bills by $20 a quarter. So, you know, when we first started looking at this, their water bills were lower than they are today by $80. You know, these are changing things. And, you know, people, a lot of people in Hampton Bay's really want to keep it local. They like the idea of having Hampton Bay's water. So I don't know whether Suffolk County Water Authority is even interested, but I could ask. They already have been, they requested a copy of the capital plan.
It's public.
I'm happy to talk to them and say, you know, is this something, if they're not interested, I don't think there's any other party that we could contract out management to than we have to do it our own. And I think we have to borrow the money and we'll try to get grants and try to keep it as reasonable as possible. If they are interested and it's a significant savings dollar-wise to the residents, then I think that we have to have that, they have to let the community make that decision and have the debate of the pros and cons. People may be willing to pay more to have it local, or maybe not. I don't really know, but it's their water. It's their taxes. It's their water bills. You know, I feel like we have a fiduciary responsibility. If we know there's a way to get it done less for less money, if it's significant, they ought to be given that choice personally. And we can, you know, at some point, maybe we'll have a work session on this, but...
I'm in agreement. I think it's incumbent on us to offer any alternatives and let people in Hampton Bay's decide what they want to do.
So first, we'd have to know whether the Water Authority is even interested and under what arrangement.
And in the meantime, we are moving forward on improvements that need to happen. We're not waiting on this.
Right.
Yep.
Exactly.
I thought it was a good meeting. And I was particularly encouraged when members of the community stepped forward and offered a plan of conservation of water in the Hampton Bay's Water District. There's some pressure issues on the east side of the canal, and others stepped up and said, hey, let's have an odd-even day or something like that.
Right.
You know, for their own community, which is admirable.
It was like almost like they were willing to self-impose a restriction and live with it to try to make it so that everybody had water pressure.
I think that's really important, because Suffolk County has, you know, wrestled with this issue a lot too, as far as legislation goes to reduce consumption, you know, add cost per consumption over a certain rate. I mean, there's been a bunch of plans proposed over the years. But if the water, Hampton Bay's Water District remains intact, that doesn't apply. So I think we should be talking about conservation methods now anyway, despite of what happens going on into the future. Because we are seeing saltwater intrusion and we're seeing really big, huge drops in pressure and big drops in the water table during the summertime, which is affecting the whole district, you know, overall. So, and that largely comes from irrigation. And I think Mr. McEwen did a pretty good job last night of describing that impact and the reasons behind it.
Yeah, and maybe it's just east of the canal that would have the restriction, but, you know, in the summertime, it's not that hard to have your irrigation system come on every other day rather than every day.
I think that includes outreach and education to irrigation companies that work in the area. You know, if we decide to do something, let them know that, look, this is a way you can help as well and tell your customers.
Yeah, because I think Suffolk County had originally, one of the proposals that happened a long time ago is putting restrictors on irrigation systems so that you could control the amount of water used, because it's really, you know, overabundance of water for, you know, it's just basically it's runoff, so, which also helps us with our fertilizer issues and other things as well.
It was interesting to me, you know, some people came up to me afterwards and I, you know, I didn't know if there'd be like this sticker shock when they saw like six years from now, they'd be paying twice as much for water. You know, instead of paying, let's say, $400 a year, maybe they'd be paying $700, you know, combined property taxes and water bills. And some people were like, well, it's still less than I pay for internet or cable or electricity. It would be my cheapest utility. And so, you know, maybe that's something they'll get used to. I don't know. So it's interesting to see, because it's starting out pretty low. So when you say it's going to double, well, if something doubles from $5 to $10, it may not be a big deal. Something goes from $1,000 to $2,000, that's a big deal for most people, so. But I didn't get people coming to me afterwards going, oh, that's outrageous. How could you do this to us? I didn't hear any of that. Most people were like, it is what it is. Get the work done. You can't not maintain your infrastructure. Why wasn't, some would say, why, you know, why wasn't it done a long time ago? But either way, we have to do these things.
We're here now.
Right. Exactly. Is there anything else on last night's meeting? You know, and CTV was there, so people, if you weren't there, you can watch it still. I thought it was a good meeting. The Dune Road dredge has apparently arrived. I want to get over there and take a look at it. I know they have been bringing the pipes in, but I guess the dredge is there now too. I'm being told Monday, potentially, depending on weather, is the start. And it takes a while to assemble everything, put all the pieces together. We're going to try to schedule an event there, you know, in conjunction with Congressman's office, Congressman Zeldin's office, at Dune Road to sort of kick off the project. This is a big deal. This project is a big deal. They're pumping 600,000 cubic yards. This is a 10 or 11 million dollar project. We pled for emergency help. We're getting it. You know, Chuck Schumer, Senator Schumer was out there, Zeldin was out there. We had great support from Governor Cuomo, from County Executive Bologna, from Legislature Fleming. We really combined our voices and our pleas to get help to prevent a breach, to put that area back together. And we're getting it. It's really happening. It was eventually going to happen as part of FIMP, but it might have been a year or two from now. So to get this early implementation took a lot of, a lot of sort of coordination. So to get this early implementation took a lot of, a lot of sort of coordinated requests and we got there. So everybody deserves a lot of credit, all of you who've advocated, all the people from the public, but particularly to those public officials who I named, you know, thank you. And we, this is, this is a time, I think, to, to celebrate because I spent a lot of my, my fall and winter on Dune Road watching this berm. You know, the county was incredible. You know, that one night that they moved 200 truckloads of sand into place. You know, the highway department has been helpful. Into the state DOT helped, you know, and I, it was tough getting through this winter. Luckily, we didn't have too much in terms of storms and hopefully, we're not going to have one between now and when the dredge starts. But it'll be nice to see that beach built up significantly. You know, really, they're going to build a whole big dune and a wide beach. And I know Julie, you had showed me some pictures somebody took maybe 40 years ago or something. It's probably going to look something like that. And then they're scheduled to come back a year later, 2021, maybe 2022 at the worst, and do it again. They're going to come back and they're going to continue to move the material that gets into the inlet, that shoals up outside the inlet and from an offshore borrow area and according to FIMP, for the next 30 years. This is what, this will be a regular course of business. Every three to four years, a dredge will arrive and pump up that beach and, you know...
Good. That's appropriate. It is the, the inlet and the groynes that come out from the inlet that create the washout on the west side.
It's like an eddy current.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. It's a scouring effect.
So I'm not saying, you know, we're not going to have issues over the next 30 years. We might have issues elsewhere, but we have a federal program in place for this area that, you know, should, there shouldn't be another supervisor over, hopefully, the next few decades who will have to go through what we just went through. You know, fearing that, you know, you're going to lose Oakland's and Sundays and the commercial dock and the fish pack or, you know, and basically the barrier island there, so...
And all those beaches that everybody goes to.
Exactly.
Big part of our...
Yeah. Yeah, this came up last night too when somebody said, you know, it's expensive to bring water to Dune Road. Remember that? And I said, yeah, it is, but there's a big economic stimulus that we get from those businesses. There's lots of jobs. There's lots of money coming into the economy. Particularly in, Julie, this is something I know near and dear to you, but the commercial fishing fleet there, you know, what are the multipliers? You probably know in terms of economic multipliers.
A lot. Yeah. It's huge.
You know, that fish goes out then to fish markets, it goes out to restaurants.
And bait and families and, I mean, it just, it's, it, the multiplier is huge, yes.
Yeah. You know, without water, you don't, what do you do? You know, you need to wash down things. All right.
But before we get off of that, you know, kudos, Jay, to you for organizing this and calling people on the, on the county level and the state level. And I know you put a lot of energy and necessary organization into saving that road. Had we, the town, under your leadership, not done that, we probably would have lost the road and maybe the water.
Appreciate that.
You know, so...
Maybe they're doing it just to stop me from keeping, calling them and...
Whatever it takes.
Like constant appeal for help is, you know, but that, sometimes you have to do that. You just have to stay on people and they realize that it's a crisis and they need to act. It's great. Thank you, Tommy John.
Thank you.
All right. So what else do we have? It's an interesting forum tomorrow in Hampton Bays. The Southampton Press or the, it's kind of that larger group now, it's Sag Harbor, East Hampton, Express. They've been doing these press sessions. Tomorrow, they're in Hampton Bays on the, sort of the future of Hampton Bays downtown, the business district. And it's at One North Steakhouse. And I don't have the time.
Noon time.
It's at noon. And Rick knows that because Rick is actually on the panel, I think, right?
Right next to you.
All right. Good. Rick is on the panel and I'm on the panel. Ray DiAngelo, our CAC Chair in Hampton Bays is on the panel. Maria Haltz, I think, is on the panel. And who am I forgetting?
Janice Sheer.
And Janice Sheer is on the panel. So we've got an all-star cast. Is it, is it free or...
Simone Scotto as well.
Simone Scotto. Greg, is it, so you have to pay for admission? How does that work?
You gotta pay.
You gotta pay.
I heard it's sold out, yeah.
It's limited, it's sold out.
Sold out?
Yeah.
And it's at One North Steakhouse? Is that where it is?
Yes.
Yeah, One North Steakhouse. And that's sort of west of downtown?
Yes.
On Montalk Highway?
West of the Boardy Barn.
Yeah, it's west.
Okay.
Or in Tiana Pines.
Way to get that.
Yeah, Tiana Pines.
They couldn't do it downtown Hampton Bays?
It's a, it's an issue with CTV and the tables and, actually Southampton Press is the one that determines what restaurant is at.
Okay.
It's a logistical issue as well.
Right. I know you were on the panel. They probably gave you a question, you know, to answer. They gave me a question to answer relating to Good Ground Park and, you know, its impact on downtown would be interesting. But I think it's going to be some great questions. I think it's going to be a lively discussion if you can come. I, I'll be there. Rick will be there.
I'm going to take my counselor hat off on Friday. I want to talk about some of the great things that the town has done.
Oh, good.
In Hampton Bays, you know, the fishing pier and the traditions we have in Hampton Bays and so on and so forth. And, you know, what the next step is going to be because I think Hampton Bays is on the cusp of greatness and I think we just need, you know, a couple more people to get in line and, you know, there's great things ahead, so I'm looking forward to it.
Yeah, I agree with you. You know, I was at the, you spoke a little of the anti-bias task force and I thought that, your comments were really great.
Thank you.
You know, so, yeah, Hampton Bays has changed in some ways, but it's, it's an extraordinary community. It's a great place to live and has all these recreation activities, always did, has more than it ever did. But, you know, all the investments we've done in like the pier, you said, or the Pon Quoc Pavilion, Good Ground Park, you know, these historic buildings, Tiana Life Saving Station, Canoe Place Chapel.
The Marine Center.
Lies on Hatch Off, Marine Center, fixing the flooding, you know, on Dune Road. You know, we've, we've been really putting all these pieces together and, and you sort of feel it now. You feel it. You see it in property values going up, but I think there's also a stronger sense of community. People love, you know, love living there. A reporter asked me about Hampton Bays the other day and he said, how come you smile every time you talk about Hampton Bays? I said, because it's an awesome place. It's really, it's, you know, it's paradise in many ways. It's a, has so many great things as a community. It's a working-class community with everything you'd want in a community, everything, you know. It's a tight-knit community, the firehouse, the churches, you know, and the opportunities for recreation, the pristine beaches. You could walk for miles without seeing a house. It seemingly has it all, so...
Agreed.
And the numbers bear it out.
It's the brochure.
Yeah.
The numbers bear it out. I'm looking at the, the assessed rate for Hampton Bays. Last year was assessed at $3,300 million and now it's assessed at $3,650 million. And, you know, that's the right direction.
Is that a 20% jump?
It's...
Something in there? What'd you say? Was this one to the other?
Well, it's an increase of 3 million.
Devaluation.
Devaluation.
3 million?
Yeah.
30 million? 30 million or what?
Oh, currently, it is $3,600, 600 million.
And it was $3 billion?
300.
Oh, so it's, okay, $300 million, so it's about a 10%...
Collectively, collectively assessed value.
Yeah, that's, that matches my numbers. It was about, it was about a 10% to 12% increase in assessed valuation in the Hampton Bays community. That's really big for one year.
Yeah, it's just shy of 11%.
Okay. All the math science people. So I mentioned this earlier, just a reminder, we have a poll online, getting lots of attention. I've posted this on Facebook a couple times. It's just, I get a lot of comments about it, but I, you know, I post it without any bias. I just, there's a poll on the town's website about helium balloons or lighter-than-air balloons, which is primarily helium balloons. And the Sustainability Committee had come to us and said, we want you to consider banning the sale of these balloons. And there's no legislation pending. I think John may be working up something, maybe. I don't know.
I'm waiting to see what the survey is.
Okay. So we had the survey and last time I looked, there was 800 responses. By now, it's probably 1,000. So the last time I looked, no, there was two questions. One, are these balloons bad for the environment? And that's 90% of the people are saying yes. And then the...
92.
92%? You've got to correct all of that.
Who's got it?
So 92%. So overwhelmingly, people think it's a concern. And then the more challenging question is, should the town prohibit the sale? Should we not give access to these lighter-than-air balloons? And there, it's still, I think, two to one...
65 to 35%.
65, 35.
Yeah.
So two to one would be 66, 33. I'm rounding a little bit. It's two to one, not quite...
Not quite two.
Not quite two, almost two.
Almost.
In favor of, and that actually is surprising me. I'm surprised. I thought it would be closer to 50/50 on the whether we should...
It's actually, over time, it's actually increased. So it was, it was sort of sitting 60/40. Now it's moved 65/40, but I think maybe we shouldn't be talking about it because it will be impacting the, the survey.
Perhaps. I don't know. I don't know.
If I keep, keep doing the numbers.
If you haven't done the survey...
Take the survey.
Take the survey.
Take the survey. Don't let us influence you. Don't let the data influence you. Now, you don't have to do what everybody else has done. All right. I think that's it for me. Let's go. Tommy, John, you got anything?
Nothing at this time.
John?
No.
Once again, cover everything you've got.
I'm all numbered out.
Rick?
I'm good.
Julie?
I got a couple things.
All right.
Okay. So going back to the dredging, I did reach out again to Cornell because they said that they would work with us on the replantings, which I think is a very important part of it. They did need, they were wondering when the completion date is for the dredging so then they can plan to be there during their plant, the optimum planting season. So if you could get that to me, if you know it.
Say it again?
The end date for the dredging, when we can start planting.
It's going to cost, I mean, it's going to take a month, right?
Oh, okay.
It's going to be four weeks of dredging, so...
Okay, that's fine.
I can't give you an exact end date.
That's okay. It's, it'll be within the planting season though, which runs from late winter to spring.
By the end of March, it should be done.
Timing is good, I think.
Plan on April.
Okay. And I think, you know, we're going to have to figure out how we're going to pay for the plantings as well, but I think that they are integral to keeping that dune there. And in fact, on those old pictures...
My thumbs are not green at all, but I don't know that planting immediately, you might have to let some rain cycle through the material.
Well, that's what I'm going to, Cornell are the experts, so...
It might not be perfect conditions to plant.
Chris Pickrell, right? You're dealing with Chris?
I called Kim.
Kim Barber?
Yeah.
Yeah, so talk with Chris.
And Chris, okay.
Because, you know, at the Marine Center, we have, we do have plantings there, so, you know, as demonstrators, those are feedstock. So I don't know, you know, cost-wise, whether there is a cost as, as far as, you know, what we have available.
But one of the things that on those old pictures I gave you, it's not just the beech grass, there's also beech plum bushes. And I guess they really hold the sand in good, so. But I'll leave it to the experts. I want to give them all the information and then work with them and get it done.
But again, because it's new material from the bottom of the, you know, inlet...
Salty?
It's got to de-water.
Yeah.
It could be, yeah. I'm worried about the salinity that maybe after, you know, it rains on it a few times, it'll be fine, but again, you don't want me to take care of your plants.
Right. Me neither. So that's why I called Cornell.
Uh-huh.
Okay. I also, I had a disability advisory committee meeting the other day. We spoke about concerns they have with access and parking at buildings and how to tackle that going forward, whether it's, you know, a lot of times that somebody from the disability committee will come back and say, look, I couldn't get into so-and-so store. And somebody else from the committee will go and talk to the store manager and say, look, somebody's having this problem. So it's pervasive and so we hope to take it, at least the businesses that, that the people in our committee go to. So if anybody else out there is disabled and has issues, either come to the committee meeting or let us know by email or give us a call and we'll go talk to those store owners.
That's great. Thank you for doing that.
We also discussed activities specifically for disabled people. Parish has some, Southampton Hospital has some, and we're going to look into more. We're also looking to share all this information with the disabled community all in one nice maybe package or a welcome basket type of thing that if, if you move here or if somebody knows that you need this information, there's a nice package available for all sorts of things that, that you could be interested, services and activities and all sorts of stuff. That's it on disability committee. Southampton Youth Bureau's seventh annual Hampton's Got Talent auditions, Last Chance, tomorrow, Friday. Please call the youth bureau at 702-2425 and go audition to be in Hampton's Got Talent.
Nice. All right. Anything else?
Not for me.
All right. Let me just see if I have anything else from my calendar. You know, I had another meeting in the reassessment committee. Rick was there too. You know, we're, we continue to look at the way we assess property and, you know, a particular concern is, you know, when properties go up in value quickly, you know, or maybe even they went up slowly, but the assessor does the adjustment in one year. Maybe it's been going up for years, but now that's being, you know, that, that neighborhood gets looked at and suddenly there's a, you know, 50% increase in property value. So we're, we're still looking at a bunch of different ways to provide relief to people who are not able to maybe manage a large increase in assessed valuation that translates to an increase in taxes. So we continue to explore this idea of a homestead exemption. This would be somebody who's already qualified for the STAR program, STAR rebate, or the Enhanced STAR, that they would, we would lower their assessment by a certain amount and then apply the tax rate to it. It's something we're looking at, and we're also looking at a mechanism where even if your property went up by 20% in a year, we would not adjust you 20%. We'd cap it, like, you know, whatever that cap would be, 5%, 10%, you wouldn't get more of an adjustment from that. And then, you know, there's still, honestly, there's talk about abandoning the whole system, about just saying, "Oh, we're just not going to reassess anybody anymore, just new construction." That's what most of the other towns do. The problem with that is, you know, if you look forward 20 years from now, the properties that have gone up the most over time are probably, you know, likely, if history has any indication, you know, the waterfront properties, the properties east of the canal, they've gone up at a faster rate than west of the canal. You could end up with a situation where the cost of running the town has shifted more toward properties west of the canal. And, you know, some people don't like our assessment system, but it has actually benefited the properties west of the canal. The acceleration of property values has been far greater east of the canal than west of the canal. So west of the canal has been, every year, picking up a larger slice of the cost of operating the town. If you stop doing this, you know, it may not be the best thing for working people to abandon the system. I'm not saying we're not looking at it. In fact, there's definitely people in the room who are like, "Let's just drop our system altogether. It's not worth it. It's a lot of work," and then people get really upset. So, but we're still trying to see if we can keep an equitable system but provide mechanisms or safeguards so that, you know, people aren't, you know, pushed out of the community by higher taxes, you know, that we can get some relief to them and still maintain fairness, but provide relief, particularly to year-round folks who may struggle to live in a seasonal community where the cost of living is higher and higher every year. So, but Jim's in on that committee.
Yeah.
I mean, it seems like we're having good, productive conversation.
Discussion, yes, yeah.
And the freeze is in place now. So whatever you're currently assessed at, if you don't touch your property for the next two years, we're not going to touch your assessment. If you think the assessment is too high, you're welcome to grieve and try to get it brought down, but we won't push it higher. So, and if, you know, if we need to extend it beyond two years, we can do that. Then it'll begin to look like the system everybody else has, where you never go back and reassess anybody. But I would caution against it. I'd rather we make a decision, either we abandon the system or we leave it alone, or we fix it to address some of these issues. And those fixes largely will require state legislation. So if we want to fix it and we can't fix it because we can't get Albany to assist us, then we're going to face this big question. Do we abandon the system or do we live with the system? So that decision may be coming two years from now. And Rick, you were there, too, didn't you?
Yeah, you know, the raising of the STAR exemption is a great idea. It's almost like a homesteading plan for those people who do have their income requirements and are, you know, paying their taxes down, gives them a little bit of a break. The idea of maybe not having the reassessments every year, but over a two-year period or a three-year period, might help lessen the blows and it kind of handles the market a little bit better as stuff goes up and down rapidly out here. In general, I thought it was very positive. I thought we had some good ideas. There's still, I think, some inequities in how we figure out market value and some of the other things we do, which is very confusing to people. But in all, it was a great step in the right direction.
We are or were one of a handful of municipalities that go to 100% market value on an annual basis. And we've always suspected that as an issue with our school funding and our state aid formulas. I think.
Yeah, we've brought that up a little bit in the committee. We have some real experts in the room, and I actually asked that question, because if we do abandon the system, we will now, our equalization rate, which right now is one, you multiply something by one, you get itself, right? It doesn't change. If we stop reevaluating everybody's property values, you know, 10 years from now, let's say property values have gone up by 10%, our valuations will be at 90%. And then you'll have to have an equalization rate that multiplies what we've assessed you at to get to the number that you're truly at. So maybe it'll be 1.1 is our new equalization rate. And I asked this question to, what's Jim's last name?
Jim Ryan.
Jim Ryan. And we don't really have a clear answer, but whether we're somehow disadvantaged by the fact that we don't have an equalization rate, that there might be something to what you're saying in terms... What he was saying that basically, what he did say was state aid is sort of in a block grant at this point, right? Was that his answer?
Uh-huh.
And no longer fluctuating with these equalization rates.
Yeah.
So, you know, it was an interesting question.
Right, and the multiplier that other municipalities use will affect their rates, too. And it's, all of the school districts in the town of Southampton are under the same equalization rates. And I think, well, that's something that needs to be addressed on the state level, I believe. You know, maybe it should go by school district rather than municipalities, as far as, but that's a different conversation.
Yeah, that's actually has been brought up quite a few times.
One other thing I'll mention before we go toward executive session, Rick and I, I said before, went to anti-bias task force, and one of the members, long-serving member of not just the anti-bias task force, but our Ethics Committee, Sister Mary Harvey.
Harvey, yeah.
Is moving town, leaving.
She's moving to Patchogue, and I'm glad you brought that up, because unfortunately, I couldn't make the meeting I had.
We did honor her.
Yeah, it was a great, it was good. She'll be sorely missed. She's a big force in the anti-bias task force, and I'm really sorry that she's, you know, she's not been forced to, but I think through circumstances is going to end up not serving us. But I certainly want to invite her back when she's passing through to many, many, many long years of service to the anti-bias task force.
And we did present her with a certificate of appreciation. It had everybody's signature on it, and, you know, I said a few words, basically thanking her for giving a voice to so many who often, yeah, don't have a voice. And speaking up for those really at the bottom, you know, fighting with, you know, with everything, you know, her heart and her time, for so many years, for those, you know, who need the help the most.
Yeah, and she's been a longstanding member of the task force for, you know, one of the real old-time people on that board for, and sort of seeing the evolution of the board, and a lot of great accomplishments, you know? And many of those actually under her leadership or suggestion, so I'm.
Yeah, and the Ethics Board, too, so we do have an open seat there. I am looking to make an appointment there, but I'm not ready yet. So, anything else? So we have, if anybody has suggestions for the Ethics Board, please let me know. All right, so for executive session, personnel and acquisitions. And I'm assuming confidential legal advice, though I don't see it listed here. So why don't I make a motion to close or end our work session, go into executive session on those items?
Second.
Second, if I counsel, Bouvier, you all, favor?
Aye.